Mike flies. I got four left. Nobody's allowed to leave. We lose our quorum. Yeah, start over. She left, yes. So, okay, the time is 7:42. We are now convened and reconvened an open session. We have no action on closed session items, so we will jump right into our review. And first up are the board minutes. Do we have questions from the trustees on the minutes? Hearing none, moving right along. We're going to review the proposed CAFER report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. Do we actually have, we have that, don't we?
We do, ma'am, and we've got Chris Bro with Whitley in, our auditors here. He's gonna, and I don't know if Steve wants to make an introduction and all, but he's gonna talk through the audit results. He's already met with the audit committee a couple of weeks ago, and so, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Madam President, trustees, Dr. Dupree, thank you for having us out. We did meet with the audit committee a few weeks ago, and I have a brief presentation to go over the audit results for the fiscal year ended 2017. It might be the plate in my head. We'll start off, okay, so I will do this a little blind here, but just to go over the engagement team. I was your engagement partner. Tania Gonzalez, who had to leave and work on another report, was our senior manager and our concurring engagement quality control partner with Selena Sadasadis-Miller, who is the head of our public sector group. We have some required communications that we are making to you at this time. You engaged us in January of this year to perform the audit and perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. I want to confirm that we're independent of Fort Bend Independent School District. We talk about estimates that are in the financial statements. I've listed a few of them here. Not everything in the financial statements is backed up by a invoice or the like, and so there are things like the estimated useful life of capital assets, pension-related items, and state aid that are estimates in the financial statements. We believe that management has good evidence for their estimates and that is appropriate. We are unaware of management consulting with other auditors, and we've had no disagreements or difficulties with management. In the financial statements, there are required supplementary information, which we do not express an opinion. That's on the management's discussion and analysis, the budget and actual schedule for the general fund and pension information. There are some supplemental information in addition to the basic financial statements, combining statements and TA required schedules, which we give an in relation to opinion on. We have received representations from management in a letter dated October 24th, 2017, which is the date of our report, which management accepts responsibility for the financial statements. So a little presentation here, talking about the audit process that goes into our auditor's opinion. We begin with a risk assessment. We test controls. We verify, confirm, and corroborate information in the financial statements, and then we do perform some substantive analytics and substantive testing. That leads to our auditor's opinion. There are, of course, many types, but basically there's a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give on financial statements, and that is what you have received for your financial statements. There are qualified and disclaimers of financial statements, which are not good things, and we won't go into those at that time. You did not get those. You had the unmodified opinion. If we look here at our statement of net position, these amounts are in thousands. At the end of the fiscal year, ended June 30th, 2017, you ended with total assets and deferred outflows of revenues of $1.5 billion. You had liabilities of $1.3 billion, which left you with net position of $206 million at year-end. Your cash investments held at year-end were $294 million. 69 million of that was U.S. Treasury bonds. U.S. Agency securities made up $51 million. $172 million of your investments were in public funds, investment pools. So total investments of $293 million with cash and cash equivalents of $1.5 million. So you can see most of your money is, and at all times, is invested. Analysis of bonded debt. Your capital debt at the beginning of the year was $941 million. You issued $126 million and refunded $94 million of that, or retired $94 million, leaving you with $973 million of debt at year-end, which consisted of $894 million of general obligation bonds and some deferred amounts of $79 million. Your ratio of net bonded debt to total assessed value is 2.21%. To give you a little trend data on where you are over the past, this is past 10 years. The lighter line there is your debt per student, which is about $13,000 per student, and your debt to valuation is on your, if I get that right, your left side, which is a 2.21%, that's on the end here. Let's look at comparisons with other school districts. I have, you're a June 30 year-end. The rest of these school districts are going to be August 31, so they haven't quite got that information out yet. But the numbers from year to year have not changed dramatically. You're in the same position. This is comparing you with the, you're that line, the third line from the top there. You're being compared with Aleif ISD, which is on the bottom there, which is a smaller school district without the growth that you're in. So that's a, that's a small number. I like to say I put them in there to keep you honest. They've got some low numbers in there in the debt per student comparison. Some more comparative school districts would include Sci Fair, KD ISD, and Lamar Consolidated, your neighbor. You see, those numbers are higher than yours on your debt per student comparison. And you've been fairly steady there. Back in 2009, you'd been over $15,000 per student, and now you're down in the 13 range. These are all, these numbers have not been adjusted for inflation or anything. They were dollars when they were spent. The debt to valuation comparison, you see you're dropping lower there with a 2.21% of debt to valuation comparison, which compares favorably to the other districts. Statement of activities, this is real hard to see, but you've got your presentation. You can take a look at that. I wanted to show this because you have total revenues and transfers in of $773 million. That's three-quarters of a billion dollars, with expenses at $804 million. So it's a very large operation that you have going here. It's very complex, and you're, it's good to have staff that are on top of this, and you've got a lot of work to do as a board. Your governmental expenses by function, 55% is on instruction. Another 7% instructional leadership. The next largest area is going to be your support services and then student support services. Something to point out, general administration is at 2% of your total expenses. A fund balance comparison from year to year. Your general fund on the top there, you have unassigned, total fund balance of $185 million in the general fund, with $182 million last year. Your unassigned fund balance is $100 million versus $104. And you have, the noticeable changes in there is your other committed fund balance, which is an economic stabilization amount. If you look down below at your other governmental funds, you see the drop there, and that's primarily, that $71 million negative amount has to do with the way that the commercial paper is recorded in the funds themselves because it's short-term, and that's in your capital project fund. Let's look here at your general fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures, and trying to remember the colors there. So the green is your unrestricted or your unassigned fund balance. It would have been your unreserved, undesignated fund balance a few years back. There are some terminology changes. You began in 2015 putting stabilization commitments in your fund balance, and so I wanted to give you a comparison versus seeing that number just drop away. It's in a committed fund balance. So you've committed, you've set that money aside, and so that gets added on top of your unassigned fund balance of what's available come what may. We've got some information here on the fund balance analysis. General fund balance increased by $2.8 million, as we talked about earlier. Unrestricted fund balance remains at two months of annual expenditures. Committed fund balance includes the state funding and the economic stabilization fund balance of $63.4 million, and this equals to one month of annual expenditures plus $14 million to cover the '17, '18 budget loss. Property tax revenues increased during the past year, $325 million to $358 million. Your debt service fund balance increased $6 million to $65 million, which represents 83% of your projected 2018 debt service payments. And during the year, you refunded $33 million in bonds. Capital projects has a deficit. As we talked about earlier, $71.5 million, and that balance is going to consist of about $39 million of commercial paper and about $30 million in payables, retainage and the like at year-end. Construction-related expenditures were $208 million during the year. You issued $84 million in bonds, and the deficit expected to be resolved in future debt issues. On internal controls, we've had a separately issued single audit report. There are no findings, no internal controls over financial reporting to report, no compliance issues to report, and nothing to report on internal controls and compliance over major federal programs. You had a couple of them there, the Title I Part A cluster and the Title III cluster, English language acquisition and language enhancement. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bro. We appreciate you. Appreciate that presentation. Mr. Rice?
I would just like to thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Bro. For your presentation, one quick question. Excuse me. Ratio of net bonded debt to total assessed value, 2.2%, I think. What is a good ratio on that? We kind of, the other charts show us in comparison to the other school districts, but on that one, is the higher, the lower the number, the better?
The lower the number is better.
And so we're pretty low?
You're in, you're in good shape. When you start hitting 3%, we start looking at that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have other questions? Mrs. James?
One other quick question. When you talked about the debt service fund, fund balance being 83% of the projected 2018 debt service payments, it seems like that would be good.
Yes, ma'am, that is good.
Okay.
That's an extremely strong fund balance, and I think that speaks to your debt service plans moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to understand.
Yes, ma'am, that was definitely a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
All right. Thank you. No, thank you very much. I think that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have our proposed performance objectives in the district improvement plan and campus improvement plans. Dr. Dupree?
Now, this is, as you know, a review item. We do have a couple of slides put together that we thought might have been helpful for the board, so I've asked, I'm Dr. Audra Udi, our executive director of accountability, to kind of do a brief overview. Audra?
Sir, thank you. Good evening, President Tussin and Board of Trustees and Dr. Dupree. We're here this evening to share with you the district and campus improvement plan performance objectives for the 2017-2018 school year and to request your approval of the performance objectives for both the district and campus levels at next week's meeting. I'm pleased to share the district and campus improvement planning process with you that we utilized this year in FBISD to support the development of these performance objectives. We see this much like a travel plan. You help design where it is that we're going through the profile of a graduate, through the board goals, et cetera, to help lead this process, and then we help work through the performance objectives and strategies to help design what that plan looks like. Much of the work supporting the board goals and performance objectives is well underway this year. This is unusually late to be bringing the dip and sip performance objectives to you. That has in part to do with Hurricane Harvey and the brief interruption that caused. But I will assure you that our leaders are quite intent on the work that needs to be done to ensure that our students meet the expected results. You will see throughout the plan that we have designed and shared with you that you both have performance objectives and expected results to help drive the work that we are doing, and the performance objectives are written in a broader manner this year, and I'll explain the process that we worked to accomplish that. What leads that work is the brand-new set of board goals that you designed for us, and we're really pleased with these goals because they're so focused intently on what it is that we want to see students be able to do, and that is even further defined with your vision and the profile of a graduate. To summarize what your board goals indicate for us is that, first of all, we are striving every day to ensure that we provide an equitable learning environment for our students so that they have access to the curriculum. We want every student to be able to grow and to demonstrate success through the work that we do. We are also working to help students develop ownership of their own learning and their own behavior, so we want students to understand the why of what they're doing every single day. And so you should see that demonstrated in our performance objectives and then also the strategies that we are working on at this time. And then we are also working to ensure an inclusive and collaborative, fluid and learning environment where we really do encourage students to take risks, to help further their growth and to be challenged by the learning that is available to them each day, and we want them to succeed in being able to grow from those experiences. And then finally, we are working to utilize our collaborative communities to partner with us to help ensure that we develop the whole child, that we are developing their social, themselves socially and emotionally, academically, as well as developing their specific literacy, language, and life skills necessary to succeed. So when we work through the district and campus improvement plan performance objectives, we attach them to your goals, and so you should see that demonstrated throughout the document. We also talk about the why, and there are basically three purposes in generating the district and campus improvement plans each year beyond just what's required of us. First of all, I think one of the foremost purposes of the improvement plans is to ensure that we focus how we spend our time and our money. What are our efforts and funding going to best help us accomplish during this next year to help increase student achievement and close achievement gaps? The second purpose, I would say, is to help develop targets and demonstrate growth toward the goals and objectives you have designed as a board for us to accomplish this next year and over time, over several years. And then finally, one other reason that we write district and campus improvement plans is to ensure that we meet compliance and accountability requirements for our local, state, and federal funding. It's very important to us, as we work through these purposes, to help ensure there's balance between them, that we don't make an improvement plan that is predominantly just about compliance. We really want the improvement plan to drive the direction of growth and innovation in the district while meeting the compliance requirements with our funding. We'll move on and talk a little bit about the process. One of the things that we do throughout the process is try to engage all of our stakeholders throughout the process. So one of the things that we do, for example, at the campus level, is that we started in July, and we do want to elongate this process a little bit next year. It was a little bit crunched this year, especially with Harvey. But one of the things that we did at Leadership Launch was to have sessions where we worked with our campus and district leaders to talk about the process. And one of the main focuses of those trainings was to ensure that we're using data, such as STAR data, Advanced Placement, Dual Credit, Attendance Discipline, et cetera, the variety of data available to us to help assess patterns and trends over that data. In the past, sometimes the way, the approach we've taken is to say, okay, we have a strength here or we have a weakness here, and we just rely too heavily sometimes on state assessment data. So what we're trying to do is use the all-encompassing data available to us to drive where are the problem areas, and therefore, we write problem statements based on that data and then determine which of those can get us the best leverage in performance. Some are going to help us make more growth than other problem statements that we may need to address. So we walk through that process and then ask our campus leaders to start that process by going back to their campus and working with teacher leaders, with their other campus leaders, department chairs, et cetera, to help write their performance objectives for this year. And then those performance objectives were reviewed by the Department of Student Leadership, as well as by the state and federal programs area, as well as assessment and accountability, and some feedback was given to each of the campuses. In addition to that, each campus takes their plan to their campus-based leadership team. So there are parents, there are teachers, there are other campus and district leaders, as well as community members, to help review and make sure that we've chosen the right areas to focus our work on. At the district level, that means starting with our executive team and with our Department of School leadership and our executive directors and drafting our performance objectives for the district. Keep in mind with the district, we're talking about data that encompasses about 80 campuses, and so it's more difficult to write a very specific target, performance objective there. We want to write a little more broadly while focusing on certain patterns that we're seeing to help improve performance. And then when we get into the strategies, we will get much more specific about program areas, subpopulations that we're needing to address, and fine-tuning how we're going to make sure that those performance objectives are accomplished. So we try to make sure that we've incorporated all of our stakeholders. One of the things that we did with the district improvement plan, too, is took the performance objectives to the Academic Advisory Council. Again, we have community members, teachers, campus and district leaders, and some student representation on that committee as well. And then we work through a timeline that is represented here. And again, it was crunched a little bit this year. We have plans for next year to elongate that a little bit and take a little more time conducting our needs assessment and really evaluating with all of our stakeholders. So that process normally should start happening toward the end of spring as we start getting data back for the current school year. We were able this year to provide a great deal of support for the campuses, and we want to do more of that as we move into next year. For example, we did some lab-type settings where we did group support sessions for people to come in and work on their performance objectives with help. And then we also did several individual sessions with campus leadership to help support the development of their plans as well. The goal being to, again, assess patterns, determine what problems we have, find the root causes of those problems, and then write performance objectives that really focus our efforts. And the performance objectives is the part that we're asking you to review and approve next Monday evening. So this timeline represents the work for '17, '18. It's well underway, as mentioned earlier, but we still have much left to accomplish this year. We will conduct about three different formative assessments through the year and then a summative assessment at the end of the year when we have final data for the year to assess, did we accomplish these things or to what degree did we accomplish them? The work does represent a continuous cycle, so we're always in the mode of analyzing, updating. The strategies can be updated all year long. The performance objectives will be set once you approve them for this year. And then finally, a little more about process. As we work through this effort with the campuses and with the district, we want to make sure, again, that we're leveraging the areas where we can get the greatest growth. So for example, when we look at our math data, we might see an area that may be a problem, but when we look vertically across grade levels, it doesn't show up as a problem across several grade levels. It may be at a specific grade level. And then we may look at another math objective that has an obvious impact over several grade levels. One example of that is, for example, algebraic reasoning. When we see a trend happening there, we know that's going to affect middle school and high school, but we also know that it affects problem solving in other areas of the curriculum. So that's definitely an area we chose as a performance objective to help improve overall math performance. When we get into the strategies, we'll get even more specific, such as which professional development do we need to offer? What kind of discussions do we need to have in our PLCs? What, if any, resources do we need to help make sure that that area is addressed throughout the year? So you can see an example here of how we move from our data points to our problem statements, to our root causes, and then we write the performance objectives. So we're right between writing our performance objectives now and monitoring, which is where you approve the performance objectives based on your review, and it's also an opportunity for you to give input to those performance objectives. We will come back and report on our progress at the end of the year, and I want to thank you for taking the time to listen this evening and for your efforts in helping kind of set the travel plan for us, where it is we want to go. And this plan helps give us a sense of how we're going to get there. What type of work is it going to take to be able to achieve these performance objectives that we've designed for this school year? I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Uday. Thank you for the presentation and for all your work coordinating all of this for us. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mrs. James?
So thank you very much for that presentation and for explaining a little bit of the process. So tell me if I understood this correctly, that these performance objectives that you put in front of us are sort of the priority ones or the most strategic ones that you, after looking at all the options of things that we could be working on this year, this is how you felt we should focus? Is that, would you say that's...
That would be a correct assessment, yes.
Okay. So that's great, because I know there's a lot of things we could be doing, and it's important that we focus our efforts all in the same direction. One thing I did wonder is, some of the campus improvement plans or campus improvement plans, you said were addressing the special needs of the focus campuses or the priority campuses. Are there certain things that you could point out to us that would show? So could you give an example, I guess, of how those needs, particular needs are being addressed at maybe one of the campuses?
In the plan, I'll give one example that the board was actually able to see last month. And for example, Ridgemont has improvement required and is a priority campus. And so the strategies that you approved last month as a part of their turnaround plan that gets submitted to the Texas Education Agency, they turn around and also incorporate those into their campus improvement plan so that we're not working two separate plans, that it's a logical consolidated plan that helps drive their focus. And, you know, some of the, some of the work that they're doing there involves both professional development. One example I can think of specifically is that they have a focus on writing and really making sure that they develop the writing process with their students and that the teachers have the tools that they need to be able to take students all the way through the writing process. But they're also developing their other teachers to help make sure writing is happening in other classrooms. So you might see that as an example within Ridgemont's plan. And then also, one of the areas that Ridgemont is really focused on is that they are needing to close the performance gaps. Index three was an area that they want to continue to grow in order to move out of IR status. And so the efforts that they're making to really know their students, for example, they've implemented a mentoring program, and so that will be one of the strategies that you would see in their plan, is that there will be adults working with individual students who can have conversations around learning and really help support students in growing.
Okay, so that's great. So then, would I understand it correctly then that all the PEG campuses, all the focus and priority campuses have all done a similar evaluation and included that in their plans?
That would be, all campuses are required to go through a similar process. So every campus creates a campus improvement plan with performance objectives, and as Audra indicated, the process started this summer. We received data, and we went through the process with campuses to train them on how do we use the data to look at patterns and trends, look at problem, you know, develop problem statements, and then determine what the root cause is prior to ever developing a performance objective. So that was something that we went a little deeper with principals this summer. And as she indicated, we created a bunch of help sessions so principals could get additional support than to go back to their campuses and work through the process. So every campus, whether they were a priority campus or otherwise, went through a needs assessment process that followed that process, if you will, that order, looking at data, patterns and trends, developing a problem statement, determining the root cause, and then developing the performance objective. At that point, then, campuses can really drill down into high-leverage strategies that are going to help them get to the point of accomplishing that performance objective.
Okay, and it sounds like then also built into the process you have some review going on that helps find blind spots for campuses that might have missed something obvious or even, as you said, I think you said, maybe the Academic Advisory Council was involved in the district plan, so that's helping to look for blind spots that might, things that might have been overlooked that might be impactful.
Part of what we did...
And it is a work in progress. It's a living document. So we will approve the performance objectives next week at the board's pleasure, and then, you know, but it's an ongoing improvement process. So there's opportunities for campuses and the district to update the plan. So there's opportunities for campuses and the district to update the plan as they go through the year. So it is a living document, and it's something that is part of the continuous improvement process. We do a review in December, then another in...
I think it's March.
March, and then another at the end of the school year as a summative.
Okay, that's great. One of the things that I noticed, or, you know, reading through particularly in the District Improvement Plan, the performance objectives, I didn't, a couple of the later ones in terms of the evaluation, I did see some breakdown by demographic data, but I didn't see that so much in the initial one. So that was just a thought that I had because, of course, if we're talking about achievement gaps and closing achievement gaps, then we want to make sure that our different groups are represented in the CTE programs and the Dual Credit programs and the AP programs, things like that. So I imagine that's accounted for somewhere in here, but I didn't quite see it off the top of my head, so.
It's located toward the back, and I'm trying to relocate it. But there is one overriding performance objective that addresses those types of programs, Advanced Placement Dual Credit, Career and Technology Education. And of course, we'll get much more explicit with the strategies which are being written now. And we'll actually be able to post the performance objectives after you approve them and then update with the strategies as soon as those are completed. And so I can relocate that particular item for you as well. I want to say it's right toward the, yes, ma'am.
That's fine, and we can look it up later. It's hard to look through 100 pages of stuff for me to find it right now because it all sort of actually looks blurry to me. And then just one other thought I had in the wellness performance objective you have there, I didn't see things, mental health, any specifics around mental health or bullying and those types of things, which seem, I see on a lot of campuses initiatives going on, on those topics. And I guess I'd kind of like to know if they have any impact or... And we're only going to know if we somehow measure our efforts. So it just seemed to me a thing that might fit in here someplace. But they might be in the individual campus ones as well, so. But just as a district-wide effort, I think we've had quite a number of talks about that.
And just, we wrote the District Improvement Performance Objectives in a much broader sense, but we will have specific strategies that will address the very things that you... So they would be addressed in the form of a strategy under, within, an overarching performance objective. And then we would look at the expected results measures to determine whether we were mitigating, you know, bullying, you know, on a larger scale in the district, for example.
Okay, and I imagine you guys will be looking at it. I'm just thinking about what will make its way back to us and what's important to us, you know, as a board. And we've just had a number of conversations about those topics, so I didn't see it here. So thank you, thank you very much for all this hard work. I know it takes a lot of people and a lot of effort coordinating a lot of folks to get this all done. And Dr. Rodriguez, all those schools, getting them to turn their paperwork in on time and all that following up, so thank you very much. Thanks for bringing this to us.
Thank you, guys. All right, next up, we're going to review some proposed agreements in Memorandum of Understanding. First is between the Fort Ben ISD Police Department and the Fort Ben County Sheriff's Department. Do we have questions on this agreement? Next is between Fort Ben ISD Police Department and the Meadows Place Police Department. And the Fort Ben ISD Police Department, the Sugar Land Police Department. A lot of collaboration there with our police departments.
I'm so glad because this is all related to a policy we recently approved of talking about how we're going to have these agreements in place. And it's just excellent to see it all happening.
The next two are Stafford Police Department and the Missouri City Police Department. Thank you very much, Chief. All right, next up, reviewing proposed resolution designating a delegate and alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston-Galveston Area Council for the year 2018. Who wants to do it?
Grayle does.
It kind of stinks that there's only four of us here. We should nominate one of the ones not here. So Mr. Burden did it last year, and he does not have the capacity...
He doesn't even remember that he does.
He does not, he has mentioned to me that he does not have the capacity to do it again this year. So, Mrs. James, I don't know if you, I know I don't have the time to do it.
I've done it before. Is it something Addie might be interested in?
It's a during-the-day kind of thing, and my guess is that she's, it's like a 10 o'clock or an 11 o'clock meeting. So it's not...
It's a very bad time.
It's a very bad time. I struggle getting there, and I don't have a nine-to-five, so. We can ask her, but my guess is she's not going to have the capacity to do it either. Which kind of leaves you.
Okay, well, I think we should ask her. I would like, Mrs. Tossan, for you to ask her because I've done it before. And if she's not available or not willing, for whatever reason, then I will do it.
Okay.
But you have to promise you'll actually ask her and not just default to putting my name on the line. Promise.
Okay, next up. I will ask her, I promise. I'll text her right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James.
Yes. Okay, next up are proposed donations exceeding $10,000. And my computer is dead, let me see this, what are they? All right, the Austin Parkway PTA, oh yeah, donated the new playground cover and benches for $21,000. Thank you very much, the Austin Parkway PTA, woo-hoo. Do we have questions about this one? Is that the only one we have? Yes. Okay, and then we have some 2014 bond projects, so purchases exceeding $50,000. We have a professional service firms for the elementary school 51. Do we have questions on this item? Okay, and then another purchase exceeding $50,000, our energy conservation consultant. Do we have questions on the energy conservation consultant, Mrs. James?
I had a question. I think I understood, and I think it's a great idea. I'm glad we're pursuing this. My question was, is, I couldn't tell from reading the information you sent. Is there a capital investment involved? In other words, are they going to expect us to put in thermal windows or different, other types of fixtures and things like that that would cost us money? Or is this all basically based on a behavioral change that they expect the savings would be from?
This is based on behavioral. They are not asking us to change out any chillers, any air handlers, lighting, or anything else. I mean, as they come in and they start to change behavior, as they go out and they do their assessments, they will come back to us and say, you know, it looks like this is at the end of its useful life, you know, da-da-da. But there, this contract is not contingent upon that.
Okay, so at one time, we had something like this going on, and teachers were told they couldn't have lights in their classrooms and they couldn't have a coffee pot in the teacher's lounge. And that doesn't build a lot of goodwill. So I hope the suggestions that come back will be...
I can speak to that, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree.
So, Oscar, I don't know if you were in that meeting that day. Steve and I met with the company, and they said that they specifically do not tell teachers they can't have their microwaves, can't have their lights. They do encourage them to unplug them, take them home, you know, during extended, you know, the holidays and things like that, so they're not burning energy when they're not in use. But they said they understand that's a major downer and morale buster, so that's not a strategy that they employ.
Excellent, well, I thank you for checking on that.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Next up, our online registration management and payment system for extended learning program. Do we have questions on this item? And then our online credit card processing system. Do we have questions on this item, this purchase? Next up is Oracle USA, our PeopleSoft license expansion. Questions on the PeopleSoft license? All right, and then our professional services asbestos abatement consultant. All right, and finally, review of the proposed Elkins High School replat. Mrs. James?
Okay, I had a question about this, which is not necessarily, well, it has to do with this site and its location in relationship to the softball field at Elkins High School. Is it right adjacent to it, or what's the situation?
Yes, ma'am, this site is right outside the left-field line fence, outside of the softball field. There is an easement, an access easement that'll come along the outside of the field and go back to the back behind the softball field and outside of the fence, and that is where it's located.
Okay, and I, if you, I'm going to, at the end, maybe I can show you my map, and you can show me where it is on here because I was having trouble getting oriented. I also brought up the question about noise, if there was noise associated with this. And I think you said the answer was no to that. But I did have somebody in the Clements area tell me that they were having a problem with noise at the tower or site in their neighborhood. But I couldn't remember if we had something there or not. But maybe I'll ask you about that offline or tell you a little bit more about it. But I just didn't want it to be interfering with our school activities, these things.
Yes, ma'am, there should not be any noise other than, you know, possibly wind. If it's a windy day, it might make some noise. But other than that, there's nothing that's mounted on it that should make any.
All right, thank you, Mrs. James. Okay, last up, do we have any audience response to the agenda review items that are posted? Ms. Heliger's not here for our motion. Who's going to make it?
Mrs. Tossan, I'd be willing to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Only if you can convince Addie to be the Galveston Area Council rep.